Evening. I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting for October 28th, 2025. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Adler.
Here.
Councilmember Duena.
Present.
Councilmember Rubio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Verros.
Here.
And Mayor Armstrong.
Here. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Saketh from troop six two one. All right, thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Saketh. I recently did a Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Saketh's brother, so thanks for joining us. Good to see you again. All right, we're going to move on to item three.
Item three announcements. Item 3.1 changes and additions to the agenda. We have none. Item 3.2, if you wish to speak under public comment or regarding an agenda item, please fill out a speaker card located in the back of the room indicating which agenda item you would like to speak under and submit it to the city clerk.
Okay, then I'm going to open up public comment at this time. Public comment is permitted. You may address the city council on any non-agenda item related to the business of the city council. You may speak on items that are on the consent counter, including requests to pull an item from the consent counter and the reason why you wish to pull the item or items. Please note that the decision to remove the item from the consent calendar is strictly at the discretion of the city council. You can speak on requests for future agenda items or ordinarily special presentation items under six of tonight's agenda. We have no item six tonight. You may also speak on items that are not on the agenda but are within the city council's jurisdiction. Please be reminded that while the city ensures the First Amendment rights of its citizens, we do not accept nor endorse any offensive or hateful comments made during our meetings. The city celebrates the diversity of our community and we strive to be a welcoming and open community for all. If you wish to speak under public comment or regarding an agenda item, please fill out a speaker card located in the back of the room and submit it to the city clerk. And while we encourage your comments, unfortunately, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on the meeting agenda. The city council does take them very seriously, however, and if appropriate, staff will follow up. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. There'll be a counter on the left and right screens during public comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do. We have one speaker card.
Okay.
It's from, I'm sorry, I can't read your schweitz.
All right, good evening.
I'm speaking on behalf of, well, mostly myself. So I live near Rosemont.
It's good to speak around. Oh, it's working now. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. My apologies. I'll start again. My name is Shreya Swamitul, speaking on my behalf or the behalf of the kind of residents of the Rosemont Core Astoria community. So behind the Astoria community, there is a bike path slash walking path that leads from Bon Jour Canyon Road all the way to, I believe it's Stoneleaf Road. Now, this is pretty frequently used by both bikers and pedestrians. However, there is a bit of a problem there. There's some concrete slash asphalt that is very uneven and very irregular in its nature. It's sort of, I think it may have been because of earthquakes in the past that may have caused that to elevate or to be sort of destroyed a little bit, but I personally believe that it causes a bit of a hazard for bicyclists, especially those who are kind of moving at very high speeds, because that sort of uneven terrain may pose a risk in which they may kind of be thrown off the path, or they, and that could result in severe injuries. It also is kind of a hindrance for people who are trying to walk, because you have to kind of navigate a bit of uneven terrain where the expectation is it would be sort of very narrow. So if at all possible, I think it'd be very greatly appreciated on behalf of the residents of Rosemont Core and all those who use that path that that is sort of looked at, and if any possible repairs could be made, that can be done. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to ask the city manager to get the details on that and follow up, please. Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
There are no more speaker cards. However, we did receive three written public comments that are before you and in the red binder and about, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see this gentleman.
Hi, pretty good. So I actually sent an email, a public comment, I see, by email. I'll just bring it all along here, which is according to the reports from Shararka Army, it seems like, seems like the council is rushing to the clean energy, which was more than approved without having an open debate or discussion of this. I'm just asking for the council to explain, to be transparent about this matter, the urgency and the motivation there for this matter. Also additionally, members of the community, at least in my community, have expressed interest in meeting and firsting with at least one of the council members or two to further understand this and just get a little bit of insight behind what is the unanimous support, or if it is not unanimous, or I believe the majority vote on this, or something that was a democratically voted measure, but without democratic input on the, this, so that's my public.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask city attorney, do you have any comments to clarify in regards to his remarks?
Sure. My comments are necessarily limited by the Brown Act, but I can encourage the speaker to review the staff report from the September 23rd meeting on this matter. It was item number 9.1. It explains all of the questions that that were raised by the speaker, and I would encourage you to contact the city attorney's office if you have any questions once you've reviewed that and absorbed the information in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, and we do have the the written comments in before us as well. So then with that, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move on to item five, which is the consent calendar. And can I get a, well, but before we move to a motion on a consent counter, I'll just say that in in deciding whether or not to pull an item from the consent counter, just let me tell you what the council considers. Whether any speakers during public comment have raised issues of law that could change our decision to to approve the item, whether any speakers during public comment have asserted facts that might change our decision to prove the item, or whether we have questions about the item that require clarification before we're comfortable voting on the item. So having said that, can I now get a motion for the consent counter?
I move the motion for consent calendar.
I will second that.
Okay, motion Vice Mayor Verros, second by council member Rubio. Is there any discussion on this? Then I, Madam Clerk, I'd like you to read ordinance 535, which is item 5.6 by title only, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Ramon, repealing and replacing Chapter One California Building Code, Chapter Two California Mechanical Code, Chapter Three California Plumbing Code, Chapter Four California Electrical Code, Chapter Five California Residential Code, Chapter Eight California Green Building Standards Code, and Chapter Nine California Fire Code of Title C, Division C1 of the San Ramon Municipal Code, and adding Chapter 10 California Existing Building Code to Title C, Division C1 of the San Ramon Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, consent counter passes 5-0, and we will move on to item six, special presentations. As mentioned before, we have none this evening. Item seven, we have no deferred consent counter items, and we have no unfinished business. We're on to new business. So the first item under new business is item 9.1. This is a Discover San Ramon update. And this is, turn it over here to Dennis Garrison, Discover San Ramon Board Chair and Board Member Candice Estelle.
Thank you, and I'm going to say, we appreciate the opportunity, and Candice is going to tell you everything you need to know.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Hi, Candice.
Hi, thank you, Dennis. And he's so great and so much wisdom. Oh, did I move that off? So, of course, we want to give you a great update about Discover San Ramon. I've been able to run into many of you at events, and it's been really wonderful. For the month of October, we are celebrating our official year of our rollout and hiring Spritz Marketing, and they have put this presentation for us together to show you, so we can, oh, should I, oh, sorry. Perfect. I thought someone else was going to control this.
You're in the driver's seat.
So Spritz Marketing, once we hired them, they really went to work building a, or creating a new website and logo for us, and building upon that, which has been really a day and night experience for us. We saw over a million Google search impressions and 42, and we actually launched a newsletter that really highlights events that are going on, supports a lot of the city events, but as well, we are doing promotions with the hotels and utilizing partnerships with other businesses, as you'll see, that'll be highlighted in other slides. The launch event last year in October was our official way of launching our new San Ramon tagline, Everyone Loves It Here, which is so true and speaks to just how we speak of the city when we are out to get additional business. So we are really marketing the city as a whole, not just our hotels. We are creating experiences and ensuring that we are the concierge of the city and a gateway to the new businesses that come. All, and I should also mention with the launch, this is all six, six general managers are a part of the board and sit on the board, and we are all working together, meeting monthly, the second Thursdays, to navigate and continue the the direction of where Discover San Ramon is going to go. The sponsorships and partnerships, since we rolled out a year ago, we have had 16 sponsorships and events activations, some which were the Art and Wind Festival through the city, the Innovation Tri Valley Game Changer Awards, which was held at the Roundhouse Conference Center. So we had some really, really great responses, and one of the things that we have committed to doing is making sure that we, the sponsorship that we put in, that we're not only just giving the money, but that we're elevating the experience as well as marketing and supporting the event. So with Spritz, they've been able to do a great job in getting the word out in a lot of print and online social media recognition. We've also been able to do a lot with the chamber and working with Danielle from the transition of Heidi leaving. So Heidi did so wonderfully passing things off and introducing me to a lot of people as well. And working with Danielle, we have been able to sponsor several events, including the State of the City Lunch with the mayor and the State of the County Lunch, Hootenanny Wine and Dine, just to name a few. And we look forward to continuing to support the chamber. And just looking at when we find out about new businesses and the places that we go to network, that we are also passing that information and sharing that with the chamber. We also work closely with City Center Bishop Branch, so we have done some sponsorships with them as well, and these are all things that have been in play, or maybe it's their first time doing it, but we have been able to sponsor it and bring a elevated event with with their activation. And that would include the Jazz Series. We are looking forward to the holiday skating rink that is coming up, and we have that new partnership, which we didn't have in place before, not or not as much of a contribution. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of print, one being with Diablo Magazine, but Visit California continues to be a great media partner with us, and we are looking to expand that as we have gained our footing in the way that we want to, and gaining digital assets, but the way that we would like to market. And we are also partnering with a lot of our local restaurants. One for the summer campaign was LB Steakhouse, where we packaged it for each of our hotels with a $50 gift card and 15% off at each respective property. Online for social media to advertise the Art and Wind Festival, we did a giveaway to the Hyatt House. And so we are drumming up, you know, interest followers and organically growing the social media website and following. And with that 42% newsletter open rate, we are also seeing a lot of activation and response from getting that message out. For our fall campaign, we are doing the Wellness and Seasonal Escape along with Bishop Branch. So with that, we partnered with the with Spavia, which is a new spa business here in San Ramon, and we wanted to highlight that. We are also supporting the educational realm within the community for the run for education. We were there and had a booth for the kids' zone, and that was really nice. And that was an opportunity where one of our event innovator winners was an ambassador for Discover San Ramon, worked the booth, and was able to engage with the community. So that was a nice full circle moment, too. Some of our advertising, some of our marketing that we are also doing with media partners like Marin Magazine, Local Getaway, Seven by Seven, we will start to move outside of this regional area, and and we would like to market more in LA and in Sacramento, Napa, and go further out. So that is also something you will see in the near future. This is just a way for the 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 footing for Discover San Ramon this first year. This is really where we need it to be, but we will start marketing more outside of the area. The Event Innovator Competition was a real success. It was picked up by a very popular journal, India West, and also San Ramon Patch. So we were excited for the students that were getting a lot of recognition for that, and also through their own school. So, and like I said, with these events, we will also see some of these come to fruition in 2026. So we do expect the Drones and Light Festival to be something that we can execute that soon. Some of the others, we may do it a little bit later, but we're working on it. But that, again, was the $5,000 per student for their event innovator idea. And to highlight a few plans that we do have in the budget for next year that we feel that will bring additional business revenue and room nights to San Ramon would be with the new minor league cricket team, the San Ramon Grizzlies. We are looking to move forward with a great partnership with them of some kind with Rise Forward Internship Program. That is an internship program that has been extended out from eight, from four weeks to eight weeks now that we've come to partner with them, and that will be students from different HBCU colleges. And it's a program that Bishop Branch already had in place, but we are able to double the participants and double the length of stay. The, a few other new things that will come would be the Youth Summit, which is something that we're excited about. We've been also talking about the San Ramon International Film Festival, which we are working on and developing, as well as a car show that Bishop Branch would like to work with us on presenting for the city. So those are some new things, but we will continue to promote San Ramon as a place to come, find well, health, wellness, and balance, and also for new businesses to find a home here, or for businesses to come and visit and really create an experience. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Candice. We, we may have some questions by council here, so be ready to jump up here. Let me kind of turn to my left here. Councilmember Adler, you have anything?
I'm interested in the the film festival. I know that we, as a city, had one of our organizations that talked about doing that next year, but what I, it's probably, is it early in the early, early planning stages right now, or do we have anything?
It is in early planning stages. We are talking about short films, participation from students, and then some small filmmakers and hosting it where it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event. So we do kind of have an idea, and we have a couple of directors, but that's...
I like that. I like the fact that kids get involved and they can be creative, and it could change their trajectory, too, you know. So films and I love films, so keep up the good work. I'd like to hear more about it in the future.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Marisol?
First of all, thank you for a great presentation. It's really exciting to see everything you've been doing in the last year alone. I can't even imagine everything. Yeah, it's great. I, thank you. I was just curious, when you said marketing in LASF and Napa, sort of in what capacity and what are you potentially hoping to derive in that strategy? Like, what do you, what's the takeaway? What are we hoping to gain out of that?
The takeaway is that other companies within those cities are seeing Discover San Ramon and looking at it as an option and maintaining top of mind when they are planning conferences that provide the walkability, the ease of three airports when they're bringing people in. So these are the things that are very attractive to those companies, but if we only market regionally, then we're not getting people to really come and stay. They can visit and leave. So we really want to draw a further out crowd.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. You're welcome.
Okay. Other questions? Councilwoman Swannett?
Thanks, Candice. I appreciate the presentation. Along the lines with questions from Councilmember Rubio. So I worked in the private sector, and most, most of my background has been IT and in sales and technology. And one of the things that I've noticed in with a lot of these towns, specifically towns in Silicon Valley or Oakland, tourism boards, right? They have these staycation, I guess you would call it, or are we doing anything locally for with a lot of companies like in San Francisco? Because there's now a resurgence where there's been, I think there was a recent VC report in The Economist that talked about a lot of money coming in from investors into marketing, and a lot of marketing has to do with, you know, bringing the best and brightest over. And are we, are we tapping into that? Or is, are we looking into that, especially with a lot of the resurgence of startups in the valley, in the Bay Area, I, you know, for people to come to San Ramon? Because I, and I'll follow up to, my point to this question is, I've, I've worked in businesses where the headquarters were in San Francisco, but we would have meetings, let's say, in San Jose, and the whole company would stay locally in San Jose and sleep over in hotels, et cetera. And with the company with Marriott and Sonesta, et cetera, I'm curious, are we, are we, are we working with them to attract people? And so, just your thoughts there?
Yes, we are. So we've done articles in the San Francisco Business Times, and we've done marketing through the Innovation Tri Valley Game Changer Awards that really had that same regional reach within San Jose, Silicon Valley, and San Francisco. But in addition, we are doing staycations, and that is the health and wellness balance, where we did a giveaway to the Residence Inn with the $50 Spavia gift card, and that was really a local kind of promotion. Same thing with the LB Steakhouse. Those are all promotions that are advertised within the Bishop Branch newsletter to the tenants, just to maybe try a new property, or if they are commuting or anything like that. So there, there is some regional reach right now that we feel is, has been repetitive for us. We want to make sure that we're also spending money outside and bringing more in. But we won't change the the route that we've been going to. That's been working as well.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Verros?
Congratulations, Dennis, Candice, everyone of Discover San Ramon. The presentation from last one to this one, so much different. Awesome. So thank you for all the great work. I have a few questions. One, the event innovator competition, is that is going to be an annual event, or is it going to be one time?
Yes, it will be an annual event for now. You know, I don't know how many years we'll do it, but it is an annual event, so we will have it in 2026. And we will make an announcement at the end of the year for 2026, so that we have a longer time for submission as well.
Awesome. I'm sure next year you'll have many more applicants.
Yes, yes.
Now, this is all great work you are doing. Is there a way we can track or measure the success, like how many people are visiting San Ramon? Is there a way to find out how to measure this success? I know, just a starting point, but can we find a way to do that one? So?
We are working with Bishop Branch and City Center, Kim Marie and Julie. We work with them closely. Our marketing team meets with them, and they discuss, you know, different data points, as well, our website showing, you know, viewers, newsletters, and all of the statistics that we go over each month during the board meetings. The hotels are able to track room night production from rate codes that we're putting out for those promotions. So it, it's Discover San Ramon rate codes that we're able to put out with certain marketing and QR codes. And so we're able to see, you know, the growth from that as well. And then any of the events that we're booking, like the Youth Summit, those are literal new events that are coming in just because of Discover San Ramon.
Awesome. Is there any program for our community youth as internship programs? Or are you thinking of anything like that to roll out in future?
Well, we do have the Rise Forward Internship Program, and at this time, that is going to be the focus for now. But with the event innovator through the schools, we feel that that is kind of our contribution to, for the educational portion. We have looked at supporting some incubator ideas and things of that nature, but we have not began, you know, creating anything.
Sounds good, especially, as you know, Bay Area, Tri Valley is known as, are going to be the Makkah for the technology. So it will be awesome if we can bring more technology events.
Yes.
And I know San Francisco is definitely the prime place, but if we can attract some businesses to have their conferences here, that will be awesome.
Yes. Today, I, or this last three days, I was at a SMART Meeting event. Yes. Today I, or this last three days, I was at a smart meeting event in Napa. And that is exactly what I was there doing, discussing, discovering San Ramon and how wonderful we would be of a match for these companies. And one was an engineering company, another was an AI company that they really just work with associations within AI and they have large trade shows and things. And this would be like prime real estate for them to come and have a well-balanced conference and able to golf and things of that nature. So we were creating experiences and discussing that. And I met with 28 different companies, one-on-one meetings. So not in a group, one-on-one meetings where we took 15 minutes and discussed their business qualified actual events for 2026 that they will have and how it would work in San Ramon.
Great. Awesome. Awesome energy. And is there, if our nonprofits or any organizations, if they want to reach out to you, could you please share how they can reach out to you?
They would reach out to me directly through my Sonesta email. But if they want to get information on Discover San Ramon, they could go to the website. Would you like for me to provide both pieces of information? Okay. So it would be my first name dot last name, and that is C A N D I E C E dot E S T E L L at sonesta.com. I hope I didn't go too fast.
Perfect.
And, and the other is if they, anyone wanted information on Discover San Ramon, they are able to go to discover sanramonca.com or discover sanramonca through Instagram or Facebook to find out about anything that's going on.
So that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I might have one. Well, first of all, thank you, Candice, for the, the presentation. And thanks for what you, the, the board, Dennis, Beth and Raghu, what everybody is doing to elevate the profile of San Ramon. I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. Much different presentation this year, a lot more activities we're seeing. But I'm seeing you on social media. I'm attending different events. You're co-sponsoring the city events. I, I thought it was great that, that Event Invader competition. And it was great to hear that we had the, one of the winners at the Run for Education. That was super.
Yes.
All that is really good, but my question is sort of related to what Vice Mayor Rose's question in terms of measuring, you know, kind of the success, what are the metrics or things like that? And I, I don't want to put you on the spot for any exact details, but you're, from Sonesta's perspective or Marriott's perspective or anyone else, how would you gauge the, the perspective of our hotels and, and gauging how successful Discover San Ramon and putting people in the beds? And bringing them to San Ramon to see all the great stuff that we got going on?
I believe that all of the general managers that sit on the board collectively are very happy with the support that Discover San Ramon is able to provide and really a leverage of us all coming together and presenting the city to ensure that we all are bringing business here. So it's like a joint effort and we've all been able to get along really well, although it's all cross-brand. So in that, that's a huge success because that's one of the hardest things to even maintain the board. But then the other thing is that each of the hotels will have different levels of success based on different events. And one of the things that we all understand is that the full-service Marriott being the largest hotel here and has the 10,000 square feet of ballroom space is going to be our star of the show to really say, hey, this is why you need to come to San Ramon. So we do understand that the health and wellness of our hotels really are dependent too on some of our larger accounts and, and big business, right? And so we understand that compression needs to be made in order for all of us to be successful. So. And we are gauging all of those metrics. In the one year, I will say that certain, certain promotions work better for certain hotels. I mean, so we found that, and this is just an example, like the Residence Inn and Sonesta, we were able to say, hey, we had a lot of people that liked those gift cards with the 15% off. And we were able to track 60-room nights from that or 10-room nights from that. So we, we all are able to gauge those promotions firsthand because they're, you know, trackable. And then as well, monthly updates on the impressions that we're getting, we're able to really see the growth from that.
Okay. All right. Great. That's, that's good news. And all the board members, are, are they all members of the hotels?
All, all the board members, it's all six general managers. So all general managers. Yes, and, and myself. I'm the active one.
Doing all the work.
So I bring it back to them and I make the connections, bring it back. You know, I, I then go sell the city, but then I have to sell them on what I just, you know, needed to bring in. Any sponsorships, any of those things, we discuss and we're able to vote on it. So it's been working well.
All right. Wonderful. Thank, thank you.
One last question, Mayor. Sorry. One last question. Sorry. Where can we help? Where do you need help? Where can we help?
Dennis, would you like to answer?
It wasn't a tough question like the mayor had. The mayor wanted you to spit out data.
That's a, that's a, that's a Dennis question because he's, he's, he has so much wisdom as our chairman and he's really been a guiding light for us. So I would like for him to answer.
Well, actually, we have tried to lean on some San Ramon residences, of which Candice is once. He lives in San Ramon, raised a daughter here. Raghu from Spritz is a, he lives in San Ramon. We've tried to activate the student community, which we all understand is a very significant benefit to our community. We have great schools, very ambitious students in our schools. We got 11 proposals this year for the $5,000 awards. We learned a couple of things. There's a lot of talent out there. There's also a lot of students who write things on ChatGPT, which makes them reports very, very long. So we kind of tried to focus on the students who put their own input into it. And we think we got three really good ideas which will follow up. So we, you know, I think just encouraging people to participate, recognizing students is, you know, everyone knows that if you get to come to the city council and get an award and your parents get to be with you, that's a positive, not just for the ones that win, but the ones that want to win next year.
Great. Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open up this item 9.1 for public comment. And do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, we received one speaker card from Johannes Tullahan.
Okay. Evening, Johannes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Steve, Martin. Looking back, as I was listening to Candice and the chair today, if you, if I ever tallied everything I've spoken about since January, since I joined the council meeting, the one thing I've consistently said is how did the government, city government, get involved in promoting the city? And I know I've spoken to you, Mr. Mayor, Madame Rubio, and definitely Council Robert. I've spoken to you heavily. Listening to what Candice had said today and having known Daniel, I think I'm going to withdraw that request. There's not much more we can add. I think they're doing such an amazing job. This is exactly what I was looking for. I mean, it's her personality. She's a saleswoman. I mean, that gives it a huge plus. And Daniel also, she's doing it amazing. So as a citizen of the city, you know, and how we promote, I'm very happy and I will never bring it up again. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speaker cards.
No written comment?
No.
Okay. Then I will close public comment. Any final discussion from council? Okay. Well, thank you again, Candice. Thank you, Dennis, for the report this evening. And we look forward to continued success of Discover San Ramon. Look forward to participating in a lot of the events that you're, you're putting on. And we'll see you out there, out and about, because we, we're always seeing you now. It's great to see you out there. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9.2. This is the Financial Resilience Framework presentation. And we're going to turn it over to Jennifer Wickman, our Finance Director. Good evening, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me get my presentation up. All right. Okay, so I'm here tonight to talk to you about a framework for financial resilience. But before I do that, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce all of you to Yulia Elbow, who is our newly hired Budget Manager for the City of San Ramon. She brings nearly 30 years of experience in accounting and finance with a strong background in municipal operations. She has been working in the cities of Walnut Creek and Fairfield, where she focused on payroll management, including system implementation and process optimization. She also worked for the Town of Moraga as an accountant, where she was involved in all aspects of accounting, finance, reporting and budgeting. She just started with us on October 6th and is quickly getting familiar with everything and everyone and has already demonstrated being a strong collaborator and problem solver. We are really excited to have her on our team and I hope you'll welcome her with me.
Absolutely. Welcome. Thank you for joining the team. All right. Look forward to seeing you around.
So back when I brought you the adopted budget at the end of May, I talked to you about, as soon as the budget was adopted, I was going to quickly hire a budget manager. And then I would be back in front of you to talk about a financial framework to discuss how to address our fiscal deficit. So our presentation objectives for today, I want to provide a refresher of the city's financial situation, answer the question, why now? And then also receive your feedback on two aspects of the presentation, some expectations and norms for our current operations, and then also receive feedback on a framework for addressing our financial situation. So the outline is going to run in this format. Where have we been? Where are we now? Where are we going and how are we going to get there? So you may remember this slide from previous presentations. This is just a reminder that for at least the last six years, the city has experienced an operating deficit ranging from $6 million to $17 million. This is primarily the result of expenditure growth outpacing revenue growth. In fiscal years 21 through 25, these deficits were covered with the use of one-time monies or funding sources that were available only for a single use. So you'll see our PARS and OPEB trusts here, as well as reserve balances and ARPA funds. So where are we now? So right now, we're in fiscal year 26. You'll remember from our budget process, in April of 25, I made some commitments to this group. I promised clear ownership of processes related to the city's finances, ongoing and transparent communication, as well as securing the timing of financial information, which is key to making good financial decisions. And the dates that you see on this slide are dates that we still feel are firm commitments from our department. We expect that in December of this year, you will see the fiscal year 25 audit, which will help to inform the fiscal year 27 numbers. In fiscal year 26, you'll see the mid-year numbers come to you in January and that will also inform our fiscal year 27 numbers. So both of those processes will be wrapped up and resolved. You will have final historical numbers to inform your next year's numbers. We also talked about several definitions and terms. We talked about ongoing versus one-time monies. We defined discretionary expenditures from non-discretionary expenditures. And we defined what a balanced budget would be in our, in our organization. We defined it as ongoing revenues equal to or exceeding ongoing expenditures while not creating a liability elsewhere. This table summarizes the general fund activity for the adopted budget for fiscal year 26. In this summary, you can see that ongoing revenues are not sufficient to cover ongoing expenditures in the amount of $10 million. It's only with the use of Measure N money that we are able to cover the deficit and project a net change in fund balance of $2.9 million. The fiscal year 26 adopted budget reflects $81 million of anticipated revenue. I wanted to highlight here that sales tax and Measure N combined are 35% of the general fund's revenue. And this does tend to be a more uncertain revenue stream. Combined with property tax of 32.4%, these three sources make up 67% of the general fund or the city's operating fund. Looking at a five-year revenue trend by category, I did not include Measure N because it spikes the numbers for the last two fiscal years. The average growth is 4% per year. And you can see that the majority of the revenues again are from sales tax and property tax. For fiscal year 26 general fund expenditures, the total was $71.9 million. The largest departments are police services with 32% and public works with 28%. For a combined total of 60% of the general fund budget. Again, looking at the five-year trend, we find that expenditures grew by an average of 9% per year. Personnel costs make up the majority of the expenditures. This ongoing inequality in the growth rates between revenues and expenditures is what is the leading cause of the city's deficit. This chart shows a five-year history of full-time equivalent accounts. So this is the measure by which we track our staffing levels. So you can see that back in fiscal year 22, we had 279.75 FTE, which is where we are currently with our fiscal year 26 budget. So there has been limited investment in new staff and what new positions we have now have been offset by reductions in positions and other spots. So this is the big part. Where are we going? So I wanted to answer the question, why now? Right? We are not at mid-year. We're just kicking off mid-year. At the end of this week, we're meeting with our staff to talk about what we're expecting in terms of a mid-year budget process. We haven't started fiscal year 27 budget development yet. So why are we starting these conversations now? So Measure N sunsets in April of 2034. And as we've discussed with council previously, we wanted to make sure that in advance of that sunset, council has a sense of where the city is financially in order to make a determination about whether or not we can make the financial goals that we set for ourselves. And so we're looking to make that determination by at least April 2032, which gives us a window of six and a half years. Thus not very long in terms of the size of the cuts we need to, you know, be evaluating. So the other reason is policy decisions now inform financial outcomes later. When we make the policy decisions today, it takes time to effectuate change within the organization and the financials. As we, as you saw on the tables, revenues are growing at 4% and expenditures at 9%. So this is going to be an expenditure-driven solution. We cannot generate sufficient revenues to get ourselves out of this situation. And propositions 13, 218, 26 and recent court decisions have severely restricted cities' abilities to generate revenues to cover basic services. Our neighboring agencies is another reason why we should talk about this now. Lots of our neighboring agencies are going through the same financial strife that we are, having the same conversations, considering the same menu of options that we are. And so it's important that we remember that there's lots of discussions about the right answer, but we need to remember that the right answer for other agencies is not necessarily the right answer for us. It will be incumbent upon us to determine what the right fit is for our community, what the right mix of solutions is for our community. And then fiscal stewardship. As fiscal stewards, I suggest that our responsibility is to have thoughtful discussions ahead of crisis and to avoid emotion-driven and time-constrained financial decisions. So what I'm going to ask of you in this process is to have engaged discourse to set thoughtful policy that will facilitate incremental progress toward fiscal sustainability. So in terms of how we get there, this is a partnership of everyone, right? So I have outlined some new and expanded commitments. This process will require the review of a substantial amount of information and alternatives, and I'm committed to working with the Communications Manager and other city staff to provide clear communication pieces that can be used in a broad array of contexts. Next, easy solutions are likely a thing of the past. City staff will be working towards creative and collaborative solutions. The policy and best practice information that we present to you will be based on externally validated sources. And finally, throughout the process, we will be actively listening to and will include the feedback of the community and council. So as you'll see, I'm planning to lead the discussions in the area of policy, which does not actually reduce financial impacts immediately. And so in the meantime, I would like to propose some fiscal guidelines that will help contain costs while we have these policy-driven discussions. I would like to propose that there are no new programs or positions without a trade-off. And by trade-off, I mean that if we add expense, we have a new revenue or we have an expenditure reduction in an alternate location. There will be no spending of money that we don't have. So if we can't count on money that we might get in the future or we expect to get in the future, I would like to plan on only spending what we have. And then no unsustainable commitments that we anticipate the long-term implications of our financial decisions. I think that these practices will help the city to keep operational costs under control as we work toward fiscal sustainability. And without them, my concern would be that policy made by council would end up being less impactful if we're not containing costs along the way. Is there any, are there any thoughts at this point on these proposed guidelines? Yeah?
Here's a quick question. Thank you. So regarding not spending money that we don't have, are we taking into consideration, and I forget if we have funding from grant funding, federal funding, state funding, is that also included in the calculation of not only that money we don't have, but money that we potentially may not have? Or potentially that has a limited life expectancy?
I think it depends on where we are in the grant award process. If we have already been guaranteed the funds, then I think that we are, I think that's as much of a guarantee as we can get because a lot of the grants are reimbursement-based. So we're going to have to advance the expenditure in advance of receiving the funds. So that's different than, for example, you know, in some agency I've seen, we get an annual allotment of gas tax money for street maintenance, right? And so some cities will count on how much growth there might be in that money and starts anticipating the additional expenditure of those funds. So I'd rather be more conservative and look at the money that we have before anticipating additional revenue.
And one more question. I see we have fewer youth in the audience. Could you quickly define general fund, just to help them understand like what that means, what we're talking about, if you don't mind?
No, it's fine.
Thank you.
The general fund is the primary operating fund for the city. It tracks all of our general taxes that are the discretionary expenditure of the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rubio?
Thank you. Thank you. So far for the report, very clear and concise, and I love it. So my question is, is what, in your opinion, can we do to drive additional revenue from that 4% that we're predicting at this moment to 9% where we need it to be?
I think that we haven't had that discussion yet. It is part of the framework that I'm going to propose at the end. But I think that that's a broader conversation with more parties than just myself. So we'll get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So you've got more after this?
I do.
Just looking for?
I just wanted feedback on the guidelines so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And feedback on the guidelines?
Are some of the ideas that came up when we saw this great deficiency in revenue, we had to do the measure N, and we took action as a city to cut back in different areas, is that part, maybe some of those lessons might be applied in the future? You know, I know it's all nebulous because we don't really have specifics, but and do we have a little bit of a lesson already on what we can do when we get into this situation and looking ahead so we don't get in that situation where we didn't have sufficient revenue? Do we have a little, you know, ideas of where we might cut back and do it as painlessly as possible?
I wasn't here for those cuts previously, but I believe that the departments will have, directors will have historical knowledge about what was done, and if not them, then their managers. I believe that there are always additional ways to modify operations so that we can achieve the reductions that we need, but I don't know that there's anything going forward that's going to be painless.
And I can add to that since I was here. I didn't expect Jennifer had a great answer, but if I can embellish it just a little bit. What you're seeing tonight is part of the lesson learned of what we went through with measure N and the last fiscal challenge that we had last year. So tonight is continuing the conversation about finances, continuing the conversation about philosophies, you know, moving forward. I feel, and I think one of the lessons learned from our previous financial cycles, and this happens in a lot of cities, you figure out a way to make next year work, and then everybody pats themselves on the back. Congratulations, we balanced the budget, we got audited, we won an award, and you move on to next year. And you don't think about next year until either mid-year or when you're doing the actual budget. What we're trying to establish here, and a lesson learned from measure N, is to have that ongoing conversation amongst staff, with the council, with the community, just making sure that we're all updated as to what the current situation is, so there's no surprises. As Jennifer mentioned, we are starting to see cities make headlines. Cities that you thought were stable for many years, literally the next year, it's a headline that they're cutting staff, they're freezing staff, they're cutting salaries, people are leaving. We want to make sure that we have this constant communication so people understand the situation because quite frankly, the funding model for local jurisdictions is becoming strained. And it's strained through court rulings, through legislation, the economy. It's just not as robust as it used to be. So I think check-ins like this, establishing guidelines. Now, they're not end-all, be-all hard rules for every single thing that we need to spend, but just making sure that we're all on the same page. So that was one of the communication lessons, but also the reduction and looking for cost savings. We didn't, the residents didn't approve measure N, and suddenly everything's changed, and we're adding services, and we're adding staff. As you can see, we're reducing the number of FTEs. We are constantly looking for ways to reduce services or realize savings so we can provide the existing services at a cheaper rate. However, that's not enough to cover that 4% revenue increase versus 9% costs. And there's also no magic way to say, we're going to economic development our way out of this. We're going to attract, to really fix this problem, we would have to basically double the amount of retail or sales in San Ramon. And I hear communities talking about that. It will just attract new businesses. Well, you also live by the sword, you die by the sword. So it's a structural issue. It's very complex. It's constantly changing. That's why we're starting this process of more communications.
And also having the data to look at periodically, see how things have changed as we go through the year.
All data is good data, whether it's community surveys, whether it's outreach campaigns and financial forecasts. We're looking at everything, trying to figure out how do you move forward and still maintain what we have, not really looking at adding anything.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comment on this?
Questions? Yeah.
I was just going to add, I appreciate that, Stephen, you made that comment about staying on the same page because that's primarily why these guidelines are important. We are going to do a kickoff with the Budget Analysts and Budget Managers on Friday, and I want to make sure that the direction I get from you is what we are communicating to them as they look to evaluate their mid-year budgets. And then subsequently, that I continue to check in with you and make sure that that message stays consistent, the communication stays consistent with those staff as they go on to build fiscal year '27. I think also one of the lessons learned is that there was a communication breakdown within the organization where staff feel like they missed some of the context of how we ended up in the fiscal situation that we did in fiscal year '25. And so one of the things that I have been actively doing is trying to make sure that we are getting these messages out in a continuous manner, in a consistent manner to staff so that they feel like they're part of the situation, they know what's going on. And then hopefully, they can feel like they're more part of the solution and can be part of the collaboration to find solutions.
Yep.
Yeah. Thanks. Actually, most of my questions and answers are answered by City Manager Spodoski. One thing, it always haunts my mind is, okay, 10 years, we went to the residents saying that, give us 10 years' time, and we got this measure N. But then how we are going to create a sustainable growth and continue to be a balanced budget, right? That's the whole challenge. It continuously haunts me on that. How to not go back? Now, as you already mentioned clearly that our revenues are at 4%, expenditure is 9%, and we are heavily reliant on property taxes. I think that's, as Councilmember Rubio already touched base on that one, what are the other revenue resources that we can tap on? I know there is a retail tax a little bit, but are we not considering any other options? Are we just keeping ourselves in that, boxed ourselves in that thought process that, okay, this is a property tax, this is what I get, and I'm going to depend on that one? Also, the same thing with the retail tax. The challenge that I see that we are always boxed ourselves thinking that there is one major key developer, and we just depend on that specific developer. Okay, if the developer do something for me, then I'll continue to survive. Are we just boxed ourselves in that way? Are we not able to think outside the box? That's on the revenue side. That's one question I always think about. And the second thing is, on expenditure side, yes, there are definitely certain measures that we can take. Maybe we are already running very thin on our staff, and staff do amazing job, whatever the workload that they are taking. But then, as we continue to grow, the population is going to grow, right? Because the new development is coming up. But then, how we can keep them continue to work for us while not breaking them? Are we exploring any technology efficiencies that can address those questions? Or those, just to make ourselves better in efficiency using technology? We need to look at that one thing. And also, one more thing I always see that, whenever we say that, hey, let's stop all our expenditures, let's not do anything, then if we don't invest, you know, many countries, forget about the cities, even the cities and counties or the states or countries, right? They stall their progress because they don't invest.
Sure.
So what are the consequences if we don't invest?
These guidelines are intended to be a temporary stopgap while we talk about policies and then before we move into more fiscal decisions, as you'll see in the subsequent slides.
Awesome. I'm looking for. So those are the things that comes into my mind. Thank you. I'll look forward for that.
And I'll just comment, I like the fiscal guidelines that you have here. I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me. I think in particular, the first one, you know, no new programs or positions without a trade-off. The hard part is going to be for us all to discipline ourselves to actually do that. I think the other two kind of spin off of that also, but that first one is key. And, but the, you know, the devil's in the detail on that one. There's going to be a lot of, you know, we're going to have some good ideas. And so the question ought to be back to us. Okay, if you do that, what's going to give over here? And we have to be ready, you know, all of us, the staff, council, all of us have to be ready to address, you know, what is the trade-off? But I like the idea of these guidelines.
Great. Thank you.
Have you got another?
Yeah. No, I haven't asked her. At this break point, I haven't asked my question, but I did want to ask. So I agree with you, I mean, in other agency boards that I sit on, everybody's feeling the strain. And some of it, you know, has been said often that is because of COVID and kind of recovering after that and sort of the interruption it caused in the market. What are your thoughts as far as like, as far as that or some of the causes identified? I mean, I know you briefly mentioned sort of like some of the causes that you think have been, you sort of said that, you know, we've been obviously spending, there's been some expenditures exceeding revenues, but, but, you know, what, you know, being that so many agencies are struggling, there has to be sort of that common thread somewhere. So what is that, in your opinion, some observances that you've made as to why this is happening and what can we do at this juncture? What are our options?
So our options are very limited. I think that where we live, the cost of living is very high, right? So that's driven up and not helped the expenditure side. On the revenue side, the legislation, you know, restricting or making it more difficult for us to pass revenue measures or ways for us to generate additional revenues becoming increasingly more difficult has really stymied cities' abilities to cover their basic services. And now, as you'll see, you know, even additional opportunities available to charter cities are coming under attack. So I think also, as, you know, the federal government and state governments have experienced their own fiscal difficulties, they have pushed programs down onto cities. And then you also have the higher levels of regulation with clean water and clean air, and those getting pushed onto cities without sufficient funding, and it all just gets to a pinch point.
You could add one more to that. Also, it was addressed in the slide, the staffing costs. It's a simple, you know, not only with the staffing, with everything else, it's supply and demand. And we're just, the amount of applicants for positions, it's talked about amongst all cities. It's at conferences where it's harder and harder and more challenging to find qualified people for city positions. And that drives up the cost because the cities that are looking for a particular position will increase salaries, benefits, and that affects the entire market. So you could say, okay, we want to save and, you know, technically lower salaries or fewer FTEs, but that will affect your ability to recruit and retain. And those that don't keep up with the current market, it's a challenge, and it actually, in some cases, is more expensive because now you're going through constant recruitments and retraining and losing all that knowledge and skill in a city, and that has other consequences. So these are all great topics, and we are planning on covering it at some point. As you can see, we could probably go on for hours on any one topic, but that's why we wanted to kind of provide an overview for tonight of some of the things that we will be addressing.
Okay. Thank you both. So last kind of question slash comment. I'm assuming that, you know, in the projections, I think Vice Mayor Veros kind of touched on it, that it is kind of incorporating our projected increase in population there and sales tax, as well as, you know, some of the revenues we'll get from the new construction being the 3,000-per-unit agreement, as well as, the Iron Horse Trail, part of it is separate, that's strictly for that. But, you know, I'm assuming it's including all of those things. And so what I'm thinking is there for a follow-up. When we get this sort of next update, would it be possible to get sort of a breakdown of like, how you're coming up with those numbers for those, you know, to drive, provide us with an estimate? of like, um, how you're coming up with those numbers to, for those, you know, to, to drive, get, provide us with an estimate of those revenues?
Yes, when we're talking about one time versus ongoing.
Yes.
That really helps. Sure. Thank you.
All right, let's continue, please.
So, uh, for this framework towards financial resiliency, um, I'm proposing that we start with council goal number two, maintaining a secure financial base. Uh, I think that you laid out your objectives really well here. I think we'll start with a discussion about the reserve policy. We all know that this has long been on your agenda to discuss. Um, so we'll start there. We'll also discuss, um, policies related to pre-funding of pensions, retiree benefits and deferred maintenance. Primarily, we'll focus on, uh, the pension and OPEB funding, other post-employment benefit funding, where the trusts are and where you want the trust to be funded at, uh, as well as evaluating those policies. And then objective three, enhancing the financial forecast. So when I laid out a framework of how we go through these discussions, this is what I came up with for a proposed, uh, for a proposal. As I've described, the first three or the first two, um, the reserve discussions. Um, and then I would like to move into a discussion about, uh, model forecasting, coming up with our 10-year model of how we want our forecast to look so that we can start plugging in these numbers as we develop them. Then we'll move into a discussion about city facilities and infrastructure. This is one of the places where we saved monies over the last fiscal, several fiscal years by deferring maintenance and replacement of items. And so it's going to be important that we look at what our existing overdue balances are, if you will. Uh, and then we will move on to a discussion of department operations, which would include expenditure reductions, revenue enhancements, and operational efficiencies. And then lastly, moving on to revenue options. So obviously there's a lot more detail behind each of these components, but this is kind of how I envision moving through some of these topics. Are there any, maybe I'll wait till the end for feedback?
No, is there a timeline associated with all this?
No, not at this time. Um, I think that, I think it would be difficult to do that because I'm not sure how deep into these items council will want to go. So I'll kind of start at a surface level, find out what you want and then come back with more detail and see where we go from there. But, you know, by starting early, we at least do have the time to be thoughtful and to get the details that you want.
I do have a question, actually. It's around the current debt and commitments. I know most governments can, we sign contracts, maybe long-term agreements with third-party vendors, uh, software or maybe, um, for infrastructure machinery, et cetera. Is there any, anything that we're, that we're tied down to, uh, that we're looking at maybe to, to extend longer or maybe cut costs there? Is that something that we're, we're paying attention to? Especially like these long-term contracts that maybe go beyond the sunset time for measure and I don't know if there is, but something we should look at.
Oh, I believe we're looking at all of our long-term contracts.
Yeah.
Just as a general practice now.
Fair enough. Is the city continuing to enter into those long-term contracts? I know sometimes they can be quite persuasive because of the pricing and the cost per year, especially if it's operational costs that we're looking at. Are, are we continuing to enter those agreements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I think the heavy hitters under that category are our two pension obligation bonds and our certificate of participation. For certain, I will, we'll provide an overview of all of that, but yeah.
Thank you.
And specifically this item on current debt, uh, the finance subcommittee, when they met in September, asked for, um, some background information on our pension obligation bonds and certificate of participation, just to get an understanding of why they were issued and how they're getting repaid. Just to find out, learn about the mechanisms.
Yeah. Thank you.
But this first part is really about, uh, finding ways to fund our current commitments before we go into, um, the forecast.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to kind of see the, those first two bullets, you know, probably sooner rather than later in, in the schedule. I agree. Those probably ought to be at the top. Cause if we can figure those out, then a lot of the others might fall out a little bit easier.
Great. Uh, so then at the same time, I did want to share that while we are doing all of this work, there are some knowns and unknowns that are going on in the environment, right? So 2026 fuel prices, um, I'm not sure how much, how many of you may be aware, but there are two refineries in California that are looking to close, one in Benicia, one in LA. And if those were to close, it would significantly drive up our fuel costs by, um, I think the projection is about 50% per gallon, um, which would have significant implications for the city's budget.
Everybody's budget.
Yeah, I was about to say everybody's budget.
Everybody's.
We could be looking at $8 per gallon.
Additionally, there's a state initiative requiring two-thirds vote for all tax increases and potentially rolling back charter cities' ability to increase transfer taxes. So the first aspect of this initiative, requiring two-thirds vote for all tax increases, could potentially affect San Ramon. The latter part does not affect San Ramon because we have a documentary transfer tax. We have the general $1.10 per thousand dollars of value. Uh, we have not increased it like some of our other cities. Um, in Contra Costa County, El Cerrito and Richmond have higher transfer tax rates that would be retroactively reduced if this were to go through. Um, this is currently in a signature gathering phase. And they have until the end of February to collect their signatures to submit it for the ballot. But I wanted to include this because this just goes on, just goes to demonstrate that the avenues that charter cities have had to uniquely find ways to cover our basic costs of services are under attack. Then, uh, also some knowns, uh, we have SEIU negotiations, which will start in January of 2026, with equity impacts and POA negotiations starting in January 2027. Equity impacts means the resulting salary changes that roll to the unrepresented miscellaneous and executive employees as a result of changes to those contracts. And then lastly, for now, that, um, 2026 is expected to have some, several regional ballot measures.
And this could be an ongoing challenge as other, um, you know, counties and state agencies and regional measures go year after year, there may be quite frankly ballot fatigue of people just not, um, uh, being worn down by the, the constant proposed increase in taxes. And, you know, that, that, that would affect anything that we would potentially try and do in the future, although we're not talking about that now. But as the model is strained for everybody else, you'll just see more and more ballot measures. The, one of the, I think it's the regional transportation ballot measure. It's every county would be a half cent and San Francisco be a full cent, uh, sales tax. So I, I know for Alameda County, you're now approaching 11% sales tax, uh, across the county. And Contra Costa, the average would be probably around 10 if that were to pass. So it's just, uh, uh, tax fatigue, I think is going to become another major issue.
Yeah. So this visual is just to, uh, show you that, you know, it will be a unique combination of solutions balanced by trade offs and compromise that will enable council and our community to achieve fiscal sustainability. And that was my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
All right.
Do you want me to go back?
We got some questions. I saw you looked like you had something.
No, I was just going to say that absolutely I agree with the city manager. There's a lot of things on the horizon that will also drive potentially in the future additional taxes. So I think that, uh, that pain is going to be felt by many. I know, for example, SB 63 is one of those, um, and, and, uh, many reasons why it's needed, but also I think many people are going to feel that pinch, especially people who are, because it is a regressive tax involved, it's going to, you know, really impact lower so, so, uh, lower income, uh, individuals. So, uh, we definitely some robust conversations to be had in the coming months. And I think we have to do some projections of things that we still don't know, but might happen. What scenario A and B type of thing, I think would also be a great thing to consider.
Okay.
Okay. Um, go down to council members, why not? No additional questions? Mr. Schreder?
So, um, thanks for great presentation. Uh, my question is regarding our model for 10 years, um, plan, right? So did we already use the model that we are going to reuse the same thing? Or is this something new, uh, in the, in your framework that we want to introduce?
Which piece?
The model, uh, model for our 10-year forecast.
I think that, I'm not sure. Uh, I have, uh, a consultant who's helping me to, to develop a model. And then I would like to give you a couple of samples of what it might look like to get your feedback on what you're most comfortable with working, moving forward with.
Okay, because I don't want to again reuse the same model that we got into the problem.
Oh, no, we're not going to use that model.
No, 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 no. So yeah, it's, I, I, I think Jennifer was addressing the, the format and the presentation of the data. But the foundation will be completely revamped. Uh, we are, we are changing, uh, a lot of our financial practices and how we forecast and more reliable forecasting is going to be part of that.
Yes, and more simplified, easier to understand, more clear assumptions.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I like that you included the reserve policy. That is also one thing that keep on coming up on our finance committee agenda, as well as in previous conversations, definitely I would love to see that. Otherwise, uh, yeah, no questions.
Jennifer, can you go back to, I, I think it was your slide 11, at a, a kind of a graph? Yeah, that one there. So, and we talked a little bit about this in terms of revenues, you know, where, where could we see some potential increases? I, I know, I know the expenditures is kind of the focus because that's just going at such a, it's outpacing revenues in such a drastic way. But the property tax in particular is looking relatively flat. Not completely flat, but relatively flat, but over time, there is a lot of growth projected, uh, in the city over the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years even. How does that get taken into consideration, uh, in the forecasting? Cause I, what I'm seeing is we're, we're in a, we're in kind of a pickle now. We're in a situation now where our expenditures are clearly outpace, uh, outpacing the revenues. Potentially in the future, that may not be as significant a problem, but we have to figure out how to bridge that gap. That's sort of what we're in now is figuring out this bridging mechanism. But do you take into consideration kind of the future projections of growth? And the positive impact, whether it's property tax or, you know, we're adding another potentially 300,000 square feet of retail as well. So it's not, but there's more people, you know, so the services are going to cost more. So this is very complex. I understand that.
Right. It's a challenging give and take. Um, I think that it's very, uh, there is a very strong desire to project on that development growth and count on those additional revenues, right? To, to help us out of this situation. But I think also we need to remember that the majority of the revenues that we see in the development process are one-time monies. I suspect that something that did not help us get into this, something that, um, did not help us and caused us maybe to get into this situation a little bit is that San Ramon went through such a long period of development that it felt like the development payments were ongoing monies, right? And so we expanded to address the growing population. Um, and then when the development slowed down and then stopped, we still had the operations to support without the ongoing revenue. And so I'm cautious about how we are going to project that growth and include it in our numbers because I don't want to repeat that trend. I want to make sure that, um, as council member Rubio brought up, when we have those one-time monies that, you know, that they're discreetly called out as one-time monies and we're not counting on them to cover our ongoing expenditures. So it's going to be, um, it's going to be tricky, but, uh, we'll do our best to, um, include the information that we know. And I can include, you know, obviously a slide, maybe like this known and unknowns about what may be coming. But I would hesitate to include anything in the forecast that I don't know with relative certainty.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there is any way to know the relative certainty because, and, and I'm, I wasn't really asking about kind of one-time uh, impact fees or development fees and things like that. It was more about the kind of long-term sustained, property taxes or retail, those taxes over time, but we won't know that. And so we, you know, so you don't have a crystal ball. I get it. We gotta kind of go with the, the numbers that we have. But, but maybe in, maybe in looking at what we have, maybe there's sort of a, you know, a potential look deep into the future as the potential for where we might be going. Totally understanding that that may never happen. I mean, we may not get the, all the development that is being planned right now may not, never get funded. Maybe it won't happen. Who knows? Uh, maybe it will, but, and we have no way of, of knowing that. So, but we do have a, you know, a, a plan, the, uh, 2040 plan. And, you know, we kind of have some projections that build out to what we're going to look like. And that's all I'm thinking is that at some point, maybe we, you know, not just go with the knowns, but maybe there is a little bit of, you know, a whole separate discussion on the what ifs and the potential.
Sure.
Cause it could be good, but it could be bad too.
Right. Well, I think there's also a discussion to be had with the other department directors about what the impacts will be on their departments. The expectation with new population to be served.
Yeah. Okay. Another?
So, um, the question is how we can engage our community residents in this framework conversation? Because we have a lot of talented, excellent, uh, financial experts in our community. Is there any way can we engage them in this whole process?
I'm happy to do workshops, you know, uh, workshops are always an option to bring in the community. Uh, I think that, uh, I've discussed with, um, the city manager and the assistant city manager, some opportunities to, uh, walk the community through some exercises, just to give them an, some insight about what it's like to do public budgeting. Just to give them a sense for it. And then if they're more interested, giving them, uh, more detailed information. Uh, some of the materials that I'm hoping to share with you as part of this process, I'm hoping could eventually potentially be a finance 101 academy like we have for some of the other departments, um, just to make the information more available and to have it be accessible.
Awesome idea. And, uh, one more question, um, is about, uh, is it possible, uh, for us to get a snapshot of any point of time, like maybe not every time, but maybe once in a quarter or something? It shouldn't be like my kids' grades in the school, but at least something, something like where we want to see, what is a snapshot? Where we are on our budget? So maybe once in a quarter or something, if we can get some report as a snapshot, that would be great.
Yuli and I will work on that.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. Um, yeah, the, the, the forecasting has always, I think, been the, the challenge. So, uh, looking forward to see, seeing the forecast. Let me just ask one last question and we'll, we'll open up for public comment unless anyone else has got something. We talked about measure N a little bit, and I know there was a lot of concern about, uh, people being informed as to what's going on with the revenue coming in for measure N and oversight and things like that. How would you, how would you, uh, gauge, uh, how we're doing in terms of, uh, measure N revenue? And involvement or, or being transparent in terms of what, what we've got and, uh, how well we're doing and, and how it's being spent?
Yeah, uh, I was recently talking to the communications manager about this. We did actually have a meeting with our consultant last week or two weeks ago. And for the, we got our information from the first quarter of data from April to, uh, June of 2025. And the numbers came in at, at our projection, uh, 3.5 million. So that was excellent news to hear. And then Simone, the communications manager and I, uh, were talking about, um, she and I provide, uh, had a discussion about an article that she's going to put together for the newsletter that will be coming. She and I provide, uh, had a discussion about an article that she's going to put together for the newsletter that will be coming out. And then we also talked about some other avenues through which we might share that information. Um, I'm also considering um a special section of the budget, maybe just a page in the budget to show kind of what Measure N was passed for, um, some basic statistics about it, and then to start showing how, how it's gonna be used over the years. So that it's documented in our budget report.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, thank you for the, the presentation. And don't go too far, but uh I'm gonna open it up for public comment. And public comment is open on item nine point two. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay, any written comments on this item?
There are no written comments.
Okay, then I will close public comment. And matters back before the council for any final comments or any, do you have any concluding comments that you'd like to make?
Uh, if you think of feedback after the meeting, please feel free to reach out and let me know.
Okay, anyone else?
What's the next step? Uh, I'm assuming it's early next year, we kind of look at the budget again like we did this year. And it's a similar format that we did this year, right? I mean, kind of have workshops and, and so on. Any change in that um process?
Uh, so the timeline for a budget, the budget process will be different than last year. Hmm. I'm not exactly sure what uh council saw. But um, what I've heard from staff is that usually about this time, mid-year and budget development kicked off at the same time. And we've broken them up into two discrete processes. So we'll start the mid-year process and we'll end the mid-year process. We'll give everyone a month of rest, and then we'll start the fiscal year twenty-seven budget development process. But uh, Yuli and I have been very focused on uh, again, clear communications, very clear guidelines and expectations, um streamlined processes, keeping things simple and the communication open, and making sure that we're very accessible as resources. Um, so the next financial numbers that you would hear from us are uh, would likely be in December when you receive the fiscal year twenty-five audit.
Okay.
Uh, and then next would be fiscal year, uh, sorry, January twenty twenty-six, when we'll bring to you the mid-year budget updates for fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, but in advance of that, I expect I will start bringing you uh an information, um, information about the reserve policy to start that discussion.
Okay. Did we have, did we have any workshops last or this year open to the public? Or is this gonna be kind of a new, if we do that, is, is a new, new item? Uh, to bring the public, you know, if they have questions and everything, is that something worth thinking about doing? Um, just so they understand?
Workshop separate from regular council meetings?
Yeah.
Uh, I am not, well, since I've been here in March, we have not had separate workshops from council meetings.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know you, I think there was a quick discussion tonight about that possibility. But uh, I guess it would depend on, you know, the public's need to know and, and desire to get involved. So um, you know, it'd be good, and because you talked about some of the great financial people in the city, it might be good to have them come in and give us their uh ideas, so.
Absolutely.
Just a thought, but thank you.
Yeah.
I just have one request, if, if I may. Um, and I know taxes and raising taxes are hot. I, I don't think we should be apologetic, and I don't think we should have a tone of sort of this defense mechanism. I, I think residents need to know and need to understand the great services and the offerings that we do have and the work that is being done. And I, I think we should take that approach as well, not just saying, hey, I'm sorry, we have to raise taxes, or I'm sorry, life is gonna get more expensive. I, there are other places that I've, I've read about, other economies around the world, other cities around the world, especially here in the United States, particularly where they celebrate the services and they celebrate what cities can offer. And I, and I think we do have a lot of those abilities. And I'm learning about it as, as I sit up here day by day. So it, it, it is intriguing and it's things that I've been here for ten years and I'm just finding out about that I wasn't aware of. And I, I, I want us to take that approach, too. I, I, because it does matter, it does matter to me that we do take sort of pride in what we're doing and not just say, not that we are, but I, I don't want us to have this mentality that, oh, sorry, it are bad, we have to do, no, we shouldn't be apologetic. Let's, if we're, if, if this is, if these are the numbers and this is the budget we have and we have to move through with it, we have to offer these services, let's do so, but let's do so with, with sort of some, some push behind it because I think it is important, especially with all the good work that the city has been doing.
Good point.
That's all, thank you.
Final comments, anyone else? Okay, then thank you, Jennifer, thank you for the presentation. We look forward to hearing more as we go down this road, so thank you. All right, we are on to the long-awaited item ten, city managers and city council member comments, matters initiated.
Oh, boy, that's, that's a buildup. I don't know if anybody's long awaiting my comments or my comments are too long, but thank you, uh, mayor and council members. Uh, very, very brief comments. Um, reminder that the Bah Humbug Five K Walk and Run in Kids Dash will take place Saturday, December sixth. Early bird registration closes this Friday, uh, October thirty-first, so sign up uh then for a discounted rate. Also, the popular Holiday Boutique takes place this Saturday, November first, at the San Ramon Community Center. From ten AM to four PM, this event features more than sixty-five local crafters and is the perfect place to shop for early holiday gifts and decor. Coffee and snacks will also be available for purchase. And then finally, uh, the next Culture in the Community event takes place uh Sunday, February fir- uh first, uh, from noon to four PM at the Doherty Station uh Community Arts Center. If you'd like to share a dance, music, or interactive table, apply um this Sunday. So I know it's, the event's not until February, but if you want to be a participant in the event, um, you need to apply by this uh Sunday, November, wow, November is this weekend. Where did October go? Um, at SR Culture in the Community dot com. And with that, uh, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
And did, did that information about the, the deadline go out in our newsletter?
Uh, it, it should, and it should be also going out in all of our communication channels.
Super, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. All right, uh, turn it over to council members, council members, why not?
Thank you, mayor. Um, October twenty-third, I attended the um Library Foundation Meeting. Uh, and I learned something at the Fund, Foundation Meeting that I, I didn't know we had access to. We had access to what's called Press Reader, so it's an app that you could download on your phone. If you have a library card, uh, it's access to about seven thousand five hundred period articles, newspapers, magazines. I didn't know that, I thought that was really cool. So if you download Press Reader, uh, you have access to all that material. I thought that was really cool, I just learned that. Uh, also, on uh, October twenty-fifth, I attended the Street Smarts Event, the uh, Street Smarts Bike Festival Event uh, at the Blacktop and Iron Horse uh, Middle School. Uh, thank you to Delores and the Street Smarts uh, community and the folks working there. We had a hundred and fifty registered uh attendees and about seventy kids uh, all riding their bikes. It was sprinkling, it wasn't too bad. Um, thank you to our um local law enforcement being out there. Thank you to uh the Alamo, uh, Contra Costa County, Alamo Division, CHP, uh, Danville, and uh, our fire department as well. So great event, great turnout. And also, finally, I'd be remiss if we didn't uh, recognize National First Responder Day. Today's National First Responder Day. So uh, Captain Chestnut and Chief Denton, thank you. And thank you to the fire, the sheriff's department, first responders, crisis mental officers, military personnel, et cetera, nine-one-one operators, EMS people, thank you for everything you've done and uh continue to make our, our city resilient and someplace to be proud of. So thank you to our first responders and that's it, mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me go down to Councilmember Adler.
You know, this is gonna be pretty short because I was gone for ten days in my uh, state of my birth, Michigan, see family. Um, but on October sixteenth, there was a Central Contra Costa sanitation meeting. And they talked about uh, not a lot of real big news going on, but they have a National Association of Clean Water Agencies. They're gonna have a, a clean government seminar in Nashville. Um, they're gonna send representative there to attend that. There was also discussion of elected officials' role in emergency management. There's gonna be training for the members of the Central Sanitation Board of Directors in disaster preparedness, response, mitigation, and recovery. Um, I did go yesterday, I believe it was, uh, yeah. I did go to the San Ramon Historical Foundation Meeting. And they talked about the um Family Fall Fest that the mayor and I were both there on October fourth. And they made about eight thousand uh, on that event. Uh, it's really a great event, um, I, I wish more people would, would attend. Great music, great for families, wine, um, it was just a good time. And they have an upcoming crab feed on January twenty-fourth. And they're uh, gonna have uh cake auction, silent auction, beer and wine, obviously crab. So it should be a good event, and I think they'd like us to go, members of the council, maybe go and attend that and give a little publicity, so that's coming up. And a lot of the money, uh, you know, goes, some of the money goes to the Forest Home Farms renovation we're doing. So uh, those are the two events that I went to, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Rubio.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so on Wednesday, October fifteenth, I attended along with the Councilmember Joannette and of course the mayor, um, the Tri Valley Mayor Summit. Um, we, uh, where they covered the economic and cultural highlights um of the Tri Valley, housing challenges and solutions. Um, uh, everybody kind of had a little something different to say about that.
Some more than others.
Yes, um, the regional housing needs and affordability and infrastructure economic development. I will say the point of deviation was definitely on the approach of how we meet arena numbers. I think there was a great uh diversity in approach and opinion, and um, it was good. I think that was a great space to learn what each of our uh Tri Valley cities are doing. Um, then on Thursday, October sixteenth, I attended the uh County Connection uh meeting. And I'm just gonna highlight the main part of it, which was uh, we covered the state legislative update, which is why I was mentioning SP sixty-three and a few others, um, seventy-nine, SP seventy-nine as well. Um, and um, and then there was also a, a proposed route changes to, route four changes to service equity analysis. Um, and then on uh that evening, uh, along with the mayor and Vice Mayor Veros, I attended the San Ramon Chamber Wine and Dine. It was a lot of fun, and uh, we had a chance to celebrate our birthdays, again, October babies, so thank you. Um, and then on um, Monday, October twentieth, um, I attended the Tri Valley Water Liaison Meeting. Um, that, uh, the main highlights of that that were covered was water supply update from Zone Seven as well as a, a per-floor alkyl and plur- poly-floral alkyl substances, which are PFAS, updates from Zone Seven, and also um, you know, desktop groundwater contamination, uncontaminant mobilization study. Um, basically, there's gonna be an investment in basically diversifying uh more groundwater options just in case if one gets contaminated, we have others as backup. Um, so, and then on Thursday through Friday, October twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, I attended the California Laughco Meeting. Um, and you know, just a lot of great discussions on reimagining governance and growth in California, forgotten communities, even though we're not one of those tiny, tiny communities, there's a lot to learn from them in terms of where we came from. Um, uh, and also using technology to bring Laughco into the twenty-first century. And I think another one that was really interesting is where the farmland meets the front porch, kind of relevant. Um, so uh, sort of Laughco's uh protect, how does Laughco protect agricultural lands and increase supply of housing? Interestingly, they really, they're starting to look at unincorporated areas for development. And there's not a whole lot they can do right now. So um, it's a concern they have right now, we definitely have. Um, and then we just got the legislative update again, as I mentioned, the good, the bad, and the future. So um, that's, and then that's about it, thank you so much.
All right, very good, Vice Mayor.
Wednesday, October fifteenth, I attended Art Advisory Committee. Uh, the two key items that they talked about, one is art gallery call for artist ranking. This year, we received one hundred and eighty-three applicants. These are the artists, every month they'll get a chance to display their art in our different facilities, in our senior center, Doherty Station Performance Art and Doherty Station Arts Center, and then our City Hall as well as our San Ramon community. So there are four locations they get to display their arts, and based on their ranking, they'll be selected, around sixty artists. So for artists within the city, please, uh, I encourage you to submit your applications for that. And also, they reviewed San Ramon Art Summit twenty twenty-five. Um, the key highlights is um, they worked together to form the next uh, year, the plan for how we are going to bring the arts into the city more, arts as well as uh, uh, programs. Okay, and then um, Thursday, October sixteenth, as already Councilmember Rubio covered, Wine and Dine. Congratulations, Chamber of Commerce, Daniel, great leadership, great work uh, for working hard to make our uh retail as well as business community, a vibrant community. Thanks and appreciate for that. That's uh my updates, and I, I, I have a matter initiate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Should I do it now or after you?
Uh, tell me, let me, let me finish up and I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, a- as far as uh my different activities, after the mayor's uh summit on the fifteenth, I went to a Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board meeting. We approved a Danville Intelligent Transportation System. Uh, it's, it's a, a traffic signalization modern, traffic signal modernization project for twenty-six of their intersections. It's very similar to our San Ramon ITS system for art, for twenty-five of our intersections, part of a larger county-wide uh smart signals project, a total of three hundred twenty-nine intersections. Eventually, they're all gonna talk to one another. Uh, at least that's, that's the hope, that's the dream. Uh, funding is for that's gonna go towards purchase of cameras and cabinets and detectors, emergency vehicle prioritization systems. And this is all primarily uh funded by uh federal O-Bag Three money, but also some matching uh local grant funding. Mentioned the Wine and Dine. Uh, on the twenty-first, I had a great discussion in a, a meeting with ten young scouts from Troop Eight 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 that they meet over at Gale Ranch Middle School. We talked about citizenship, we talked about rights and responsibilities of, of citizens and different ways that they can get involved and uh do helpful things in the community. Uh, and then uh, on the twenty-second, I attended a ribbon cutting for Wanderlust Escapes Travel Agency over in the conference room over by the Chamber Commerce uh offices. Uh, this was a new kind of a full-service travel agency. They had a great giveaway, too. It was one of those things where you, you, you throw your business card into the basket and then a winner gets something. The prize was a, a seven-night, eight-day or eight-day vacation, paid vacation. Uh, there was a, a rush to throw the business cards into that basket. Uh, there was a lucky winner. Uh, tomorrow, I'm uh doing another ribbon cutting for Hill Physicians. This will be over across from uh kind of Iron Horse Middle School uh, in the Bishop Ranch area, across from Central Park. And then uh, you mentioned the Holiday Boutique coming up, that's gonna be great. Also, just a reminder, we've got the uh Christie Yamaguchi Ice Rink opening will be on November seventh. So mark your calendar for that, that's always a great uh fun event as well, so. And that's all my report, let me go back to you on your matters, matters initiated.
Thank you, mayor. Um, as you always know, that um, I admire and support our staff for their great work. Um, but then there is some concerns keep coming to me recently that uh, some of the staff, they're undermining our commissions and their commissioners' uh efforts on what they are providing uh for our community. So one of the latest example is recently the field users allocation that happened. The staff just rushed and allocated field users with their allocations while our commission is working on field user policy. And that shows that they are either uh undermining or being negligent about what the commission is working on. And unlike every year, somehow, they thought that- And unlike every year, somehow they thought that this year they need to rush it and allocate it in October. They called the meeting in October, which is normally they never do that. And also, the, the way they did it, they totally broke the process. Typically, when we allocate fields, we always ask the field users about their roster. They just make up their own mind and they started even sharing those numbers with others. So that really concerns me. Not only me, because this is creating a friction within the community. You know, when we start, we don't even communicate with these co-field users. We don't talk to them what is happening with their capacity requirements. And we are just, as a staff, assume our own numbers and just keep on allocating these kind of fields that creates animosity between the field users and it creates friction and results into a bad reputation for the city. And additionally, one more thing is when staff realize that there is a capacity requirement for these field users, I expect that they bring that to the commission notice. If they came to know that there is a requirement of a new field user coming into the picture while asking the existing field user to cap it and not add any more registrations, they should communicate at least this kind of critical information with the commission, which they didn't do it. On top of it, they added that into the field user and then they just not even communicating with the existing field user, just allocate it and said that this is how we will allocate, take it or go. Take it and go, that's it. This is not the way we do the business in the city. And I hope these concerns, this is one of them, I'm telling. Let's not get into the next level, but I hope we take our commissions very seriously. They are our eyes and ears in the community for the council. We rely on them heavily. And I hope the staff make sure that they take their feedback and communicate and collaborate with our commission. Being said that, I want to make sure that, bring back that field users allocation back to the commission, listen to them, what they want to do with the policy. And after the policy comes out, then only we should release that allocation and avoid this friction and community animosity.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand your ask for the matters initiated.
Yes. What I'm asking is, we need to bring back that field users allocation to the commission and request the commission to look into it according to their policy.
Okay, I do know that the, the co-field user policy is going to the next Parks Commission meeting. So that is on the agenda for the next Parks Commission. I know staff has been talking to the Parks Commissioners about reviewing and updating the policy. I also know that we are following the schedule for field allocation right now. It is in the process of going through the allotments for the field. There has been an email that's been issued to all the field user groups outlining the timeline. I don't have it on hand right now, but right now they have allocated the initial allocations and we are in the process for any disputes or any changes proposed by field user groups. So that hasn't been determined yet of who is getting use of what field when. So that has not been officially decided upon until we hear back from the field user groups. And if there are conflicts, then the user groups will work with staff to resolve those conflicts based on our current policy. So we do know that there are some questions about the current policy, but we are following that policy and it is going to the Parks Commission for review right now. I believe it's happening in November. I think it's a Thursday. I know we have our Parks Commissioner Chair here, where the Parks Commission will hear that policy. So staff is abiding by the policy based on what's written there. So I, I don't, I don't understand your matters initiated tonight.
So I'll tell you one thing. Do you know when the, when the staff sent request email for roster to these field users?
I don't have dates offhand.
They sent it yesterday. Do you know when they did the field allocation?
I, again, I don't have that offhand.
Yeah.
But I know.
The week they did it, the sequence should be, get the roster first, understand what is the roster, what is the requirement, and then allocate. After commissioner had to reach to the staff department head and request that, then the department head immediately asking everybody to send email. Why is it going opposite?
I, I don't have that information offhand right now. I do know that nothing has been allocated yet and I'm still wondering what the ask is. Do you want to agendize this for a future council meeting? Because now I think we're starting to get, I sensed Martin over my shoulder that we're starting to get into a discussion.
I'm really worried about this, how staff can just undermine commission and start doing these kind of things. So this is a clear picture that I'm seeing. And then i- if this continues, then it'll be a problem for us.
Well, again, the policy will be reviewed by the Parks Commission and that policy can be called up by the council if you don't agree with whatever the Parks Commission recommends. I know you and I have had discussions about revising and clarifying that policy and that's why it's going before the Parks Commission. So the, the current timing is I do know that no field use has been permanently assigned yet because staff did lay out the process of appealing and moving forward with that. So if you'd like a council item, we can definitely come with a presentation outlining our field use, the timing, some of the issues. Quite frankly, other than one group, I have been unaware of any other complaints from field users at this point. So.
It doesn't matter, one group or two groups, as long as we are creating unnecessary friction within the community and creating animosity just because of negligence and lack of leadership, that's not the right way of doing things.
If you'd like a presentation, I'd be more than happy to schedule one for council if that's the wish of the council.
I definitely want to make sure that whatever the allocations are done, that need to be, again, go back reviewed and that should be followed through the commission. That's definitely, I want to make sure that happens. And then any changes that we are doing for commission presentations or commission agendas and all that, I need a presentation to the council, what changes we are bringing.
I will be more than happy to have a presentation before the council because I'd like to answer and have staff explain the process for this year. So if, if that's the, the ask, I would be more than happy to, to do that.
Yes, please. That's my ask, thank you.
Do I have two other nodding heads to agendize that or?
Councilmember.
Okay, so we will bring back, more than likely, it'll be after the Parks Commission hears it. So we can also provide the Parks Commission feedback and then we will provide an overview to the council of our field use policy and how field use is being allocated and what the steps we went through this year.
Yeah, just to make sure, in addition to that, what are the changes that we are doing at the staff level? By, is there any changes that we are doing which can remove commissions from their oversight? Any piece, if we are doing, I'm not asking you need to do that. If we are planning to do anything like that, I want to make sure council should know those things.
Okay, I'm, I'm unaware of that, but yes, we'll, we'll make sure to include information regarding that.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, all right. And with that, now we need to move to a closed session. We will first take public comments on closed session. The item is LM point one. We're going to move, convene a closed session pursuant to government code, California Government Code 59457 to perform the evaluation of the city attorney. I'm going to open up public comment. Do we have any speaker cards or anyone to speak on this item? Any written comment?
There are no speaker cards or written comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment. And at this time, we will convene to closed session. And we will be back to report on closed session when we're through. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene here. We've closed, we convened a closed session. We are now going to report on the closed session. The council has met in closed session to perform the evaluation of the city attorney and hereby direct staff to bring back an updated city attorney employment contract for consideration by the city council in open session at the next city council meeting November 12th. That's the report out. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.